One more in the waiting room there. Alright, good morning. It is June 10th, 8:00 AM. This is a work session for kind of the planning board. Uh, we have one item on the agenda this morning, which is the SOB test facility. I believe we have some of the SOB team joining us here. You guys give us a, an overview of the project, your intent, what you're looking for. Uh, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll start off. Uh, I'm Ryan Worthing. I'm the, uh, the, the project lead for the SOB, from SOB for the facility. Um, there's, as a, as an introduction to the site or the facility, what we're looking to do is, uh, over the long term, number one, build a training facility for a DOD customer that we have. The second part of the facility would be a storage and a repair depot where the customer could send us product and we'd need to repair it or upgrade it. And lastly, the, we have the potential in the long run to do assembly of those products. Um, from a, from a timing perspective, which I'm sure we'll get to in a little bit. The DOD customer needs capability by the first of October. And, but we fully recognize that we may not be able to get the facility to that state by then, but that's our hope and our, and our goal. Um, the second part for storage, and we actually need the storage of some of this government product within the next 30 days. So we'll have to look at alternative means to do that, but we'd like to again move the product, project fairly quickly. And then lastly, the assembly won't happen, uh, upgrade assembly won't happen until next year. Um, so I'll, from there, I think I'll pass it over to Rob. I believe you're, you've got the site pulled up. You can talk about it. And thank you for having the meeting today as well. I really appreciate your support.
Um, so the, the plan that's up was the concept plan that was submitted. You can see, um, in the, in the front of the building on the south side on the left will be the main, um, shipping and receiving area. So we're expanding the parking a little bit or the pavement a little bit there to allow for tractor trailers to back in and out of the uh, overhead doors there. And that area is, uh, enclosed with fencing. Uh, the fencing then continues around along the west side. Um, along the edge of the property wraps around the north edge. And that ties back into the building at the northeast corner. That, that northern portion of the existing parking lot will be a, uh, a, a training area for the for the various, uh, I guess vehicles Jim that are, or Ryan that are coming in and out of those side doors there. So that'll be fenced and gated as well. Um, the, the remaining parking is, um, is the existing pavement that'll be re- restripped, reconfigured. Um, it'll all be replaced, but in the same configuration. The, um, the entrance off a columnar has been slightly modified. Right now it has like a kind of a split entry. It's kind of a Y shape, um, sort of simplifying that, sending it straight in and out at the, at the light there. Um, there's additional screening proposed along the, uh, northwest corner, kind of along, uh, the views from the the, uh, forty-one on ramp. And then along the roadside as well, we're gonna enhance that screening. Uh, we're currently showing, um, dumpster enclosure on the south side of the building. It's adjacent to the loading doors, uh, the materials are coming in and out and then uh, packaging refuse can go right out the door there. That will be enclosed and screened, vegetation as well. Uh, we're suggesting a few stormwater management areas as shown. Uh, those are still being worked out. Um, this site is, um, got a lot of challenges for our stormwater being in the Lake Creek watershed. And having limited, limited space to, um, like detention. Um, so those are, those are stone flocks, but those are some conceptual areas that we're looking at. Uh, there'll be new, new sight lighting and new building bonded lighting, um, which hasn't been submitted, wasn't submitted in this package, but we do have a plan, a, a concept plan ready. Now that we can share for the lighting. Um, I don't know. Jim, are you on? Do you wanna?
Yeah, I'm on.
Architecture? Yeah?
Yeah, um, and I don't know if you have the latest plan and if I can share or not.
What are you giving the power to share?
Okay.
Be okay now?
Yeah, you're gonna see it in that, yeah.
Let me get you out of the way here. Okay. Okay, yeah. So right now, the, the latest plan for the facility, you can see here in yellow, this is really the phase one, uh, and this lighter, this, uh, orangey color as well. Uh, Ryan's immediate needs are for training uh, and some classroom areas. And then there's some administrative and work areas, uh, on the front of the building. So, uh, our primary goal right now is to, is to get phase one uh, in, in the works. Uh, the manufacturing assembly area is, can happen at a later date. Uh, as, as Rob was describing, uh, we want, we're, we have a raised dock, uh, truck door here. And we have the ability to bring a full-size truck into the building with the bridge crane, uh, here. Uh, there will be no onsite parking overnight, parking of trucks, trucks. Uh, any deliveries to come in here, uh, get unloaded and the truck leaves. Um, within the time it takes to unload the truck. Uh, these trucks, uh, same thing, they're gonna be inside or they're gonna be offsite. So uh, there, there will be no truck parking outside. Uh, and that is one, one, uh, one difference on the plan that Rob was just showing. There will not be a depressed loading dock. Uh, this will be a raised platform. And, um, there's a mezzanine in there that currently, uh, we're, we're looking at adding a small lift there to get up to that. There's possibility, this, this office area we're building in here, um, will have the, the, the ability, uh, maybe a later date to be used for some storage. Uh, we'll frame it such a way that we can, we can utilize the top of that. As far as the exterior of the building, we're not doing an awful lot. We want to change some of the colors, uh, make repairs. Uh, there's masonry and, and metal panel repairs that need to be made all around. The building needs, um, TLC. Um, the two new doors up in the front. Uh, and a couple, there's additional, there's a man door and there's some overhead doors for where the dumpster enclosure, uh, will be. Um, we're still working with our MEP engineers, uh, on any exterior equipment that we may need to screen. Um, and let me see if I can also open up just, uh, this is just a very preliminary rendering. It's the building. We will change some of the colors on it. Uh, we're looking at any other enhancements we might make to, to, to make the building a little more appealing. Uh, but again, we're not changing the footprint or the structure in, in any way. So, um, okay, now I can turn that back over to Rob if need be. Stop sharing.
Well, um, hey Jim, could you, can you pull the, um, the, the plan back up?
Yep.
I probably don't have, uh, the ability to point, so I'll do my best to, to talk. So when we look at the, I think one thing that, that Jim kind of said, but I'd like to highlight is uh, it, I already highlighted the fact that we kind of need this, you know, to move forward fairly quickly if at all possible. When you look at the phase one, you know, being in the yellow versus essentially phase three, which is the blue. Um, that entire area needs to be reslabbed, or actually it needs to have a slab put in it.
Yeah, I'm, good point.
So we need to, well, what we're really hoping for, I think, is, is, uh, as we're moving forward to, to try to, try to move forward with demolition on the, on the interior to get the, whatever, whatever structure is, is in the floor, it's whatever underlay, underlaid the old AstroTurf. Um, it's, it's a mix of, um, aggregate and that rubber pellet-y stuff and, and frankly, it's dirt. Um, but the, the more progress we can make rapidly there to get in, internal demolition and preparations done while we're simultaneously moving forward with, uh, planning approval, that'll be really helpful. Um, but not, not much of that, as I look at the plan here, the only part that has solid slab under it right now would be at the bottom of the screen where it's
Here, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a, kind of an office spacey type, um, event center. That's the only part that's got slab. Everything else is gonna have to be pulled out, um, down to a certain level. And then we'll have to install slab to support what we're doing on top of it.
The yellow on the right side.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that was all AstroTurf, um, underlayment.
Everything right, right back to the, to the perimeter of the building. Um, we'll need a slab and we're working, our structural engineer, we're working with him on a, um, essentially an eight-inch, uh, slab for most of it with some, some reinforced, some, uh, reinforced areas. Um, obviously we have a, uh, bridge crane here, so we'll have some footings, uh, for that as well.
Isn't there a, a mezzanine over that yellow area?
Yes.
What's happening with that? Okay.
Uh, that's just, it becomes some office space for us. And we're not changing the footprint of the mezzanine.
When you submit the lighting plan, the standing that, on fat track, can you have them include the photometrics and light trespass on that as well?
Yes, we have a photometric plan.
Can you kind of walk us through on the exterior of the building where you're proposing this phase one and phase two?
Yeah, I could do that, Jim, if you want me to.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
You want us through the phase one and phase two for the exterior of the building?
Ryan, you want to take that?
Yeah, I can do it. Can you go to the, uh, go to the, like the ground floor? Um, so I'll, how about I do this? I'll, I'll start on the, uh, can you, can you see Jim's cursor? Or actually, yeah, you can see Jim's cursor.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll start on the lower left-hand side. So, uh, the, uh, as we go, and I'll go counterclockwise. So as you look at phase one, that, that white yellow color, the exterior won't change at all. There's an existing door that's there. And we'll move around to the right to the, the bottom. There's a front door, um, with a, with an overhead. Um, I don't know what that would be called, but kind of overhead canopy.
Yeah.
That, that entrance will remain just how it is now. Um, as you move a little further to the right, there's, there's a door and there's a three, three to five windows, I think, that are all there. We'll replace the windows to, to a higher quality and standard, uh, but the holes will remain the same. Um, if you go further to the right, um, there's a thing that says laser training area. It has like little circles, um, there. That's all enclosed now. Um, there's no windows there and none, none will be added. Um, if you move further, that little orange box, that's a phase two box. That'll be a, kind of like a break room lunch area for students. Um, I think we, we're still considering how we put windows in that area, whether they're gonna be, you know, at, at, not at grade. At, you know, at person height versus above to give some natural light. Um, we haven't really discussed that yet, but I think we'll put a few windows in there. Moving slightly further to the right, there's an existing man door and existing overhead door. Both of those will remain. Um, what's key about that door is that will be the, essentially the phase one construction entry. So that, you know, you can get dump trucks, you can get heavy machinery in and out of there. That'll be the door that we, we do all the work internally, getting all that, you know, all the refuse out essentially. Um, moving around further to the right. Um, the, uh, on the exterior, there'll be windows. We'll have to punch a few holes to make windows in these classrooms. Um, because right now there are no openings on, that'll be the north side. So the, each classroom will get a couple of windows. Um, so four, probably five, uh, window openings in that, so that's, and, and, and I'm going on, that's kind of like a phase two. But phase one and phase two kind of move simultaneously. Um, I've, I've just been very, I've been specific with the training of area that if we can get the front, which would be the bottom of the screen, if we can get that area done, we can all, we could run classes in there as well as office space while we're prepping the larger classroom area to the right. Um, I think the larger hole up there would be, you know, installed bathrooms and, and other things. Um, moving further to the top, which I guess would be the west, the existing doors. I believe right now there's three existing doors. Um, one of them will be closed off because we don't need it for, um, for code, you know, for distances to the exits. Um, but there, there's standard, um, crash doors, you know, exit only. Um, and then you move further to the south, there's an existing man door there. Um, and then the part where the overhead doors are, those will not be in, so that's a phase three install. So those will not be opened or, and installed until well after we have, um, essentially have phase one operational. Um, I, I think we're probably looking at sometime in the, you know, October, November, December, where we'd actually be opening those doors. Um, but we'd have to transition from doing work, you know, coming in from that back door. And then essentially close that area off and use it for classrooms and then shift all entry to the overhead doors on the other side as we continue to do work in the manufacturing area.
You just said phase three. How many phases are you proposing?
Um, it'd be three. Total.
Right, with, with one and two kind of running in parallel as much as possible.
Yeah, there, there's, so there's a distinction between, if you look at the yellow, the barrier between the yellow and the blue. That what we're gonna do is we're gonna put up vertical walls all the way to, essentially all the way to the, to steel at the ceiling to isolate the training area and that, that, that's the, sorry, the easterly administrative area while we're doing, um, more work in the blue area. So that, that's another way to delineate it. I hope I was able to explain that sufficiently.
Yes, can you talk about the site work, like the parking lot and all of that as far as your phasing is, you proposed?
So I think that from a, if we go to the out, I don't know who, who owns the outside one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop sharing and Rob can throw the site back up.
Uh, that wasn't me that was sharing it. It was, it was the board.
Oh, it's the board, okay.
So I think from a, I mean, I'll, I'll kick this off and then I'll, uh, I'll let others that are smarter than me kind of talk it. So current, currently, the, the lighter gray is what, you know, for the most part, what exists, except for at the road. That's a slightly different depiction. Uh, but the, the larger parking lot and the light gray, that's what exists. Um, so phase one interior to the building, that, there won't be any significant changes on the outside. We don't need to make changes to the, to the entry um, or to the entry from the road or to the entry into the backside of that building at the man.
There, I thought there are changes at the road.
Uh, but, but we don't have to do them in, right away in phase one. If that, I guess, I thought that was the question I was asked was how do, how do we talk about, um, the exterior in relations to the phasing?
Yeah, we certainly want to know what work is being proposed on the exterior of the building and when you anticipate doing that work.
So the exterior, okay, so the exterior of the building itself, uh,
The site plan, your site work.
So Ryan, did, if, if I may, to
Yeah.
To, to get phase one. Uh, we really, we need, we don't need to do anything to the exterior of the building.
Or to the parking lot. We don't need to do, and, we don't need to do anything.
Or to the parking lot, correct.
Okay, so what would phase two be then? On the, yeah, on the site, not in the building?
So then, so fa, so phase two on the site, if, if you recall, so phase one and phase two inside the building kind of run in parallel. So, so phase two is pro, it's more of the same, which we don't need to do anything to the, the actual pavement. Um, at, at all, I think.
No site work until phase three?
Probably phase three, except, with the exception of
That's not my understanding. You, you originally had said that you need to get trucks and stuff. I mean, is there, oh, there's no access in on the, on the northern side of the building. It's, is it an existing overhead door?
There's an existing overhead door.
So that's where you're getting all your trucks and stuff in right now, right? So that's not modifying you?
It's not, it's not a modification. The door already exists. It's, it's big enough.
It's a twelve, twelve by fourteen door. Um, now, um, I, I don't have, I can't run a cursor on here, but it's down in that, uh, north.
Yeah, I see it now. Yep.
That's the area there.
Yep, that's, it, it, and, yeah, it's existing. The, what we need to still determine, and we, we haven't, we haven't determined it yet is when do we need to get the fencing installed for security? Um, I, I think that's a, that's a long with do, phase three will be pavement. Pavement adjustments and then essentially closing in that fence line or, um, or, you know, attaching it to the building and then moving around to the, the southwest and north. Um,
Be phase three as well?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Drainage work be phase three as well?
So Rob, I think I need you to weigh in on that.
Yeah, all the site work would be at the, uh, base three as well. Uh, you know, as we replace the pavement, we'll be installing the, the drainage.
Do you intend to, I mean, the added pavement that you're putting in, is that, are you putting any parking stalls on that or is that just for truck turning and, and training?
So on the, on the southern side, top left, that's truck turning. Um, it is entirely truck turning, uh, just to make sure we can get trucks in and out of there. On the northern side or on the right side, that small addition, that's to make sure we have a training area for, uh, we, there's four veh- vehicle assets that we'll need to train students on. So that's an added place where we can park those trucks. Um, to get some separation and to train students on them. And that would be inside the fenced area.
So you're not modifying the parking count that currently exists? You're just adding asphalt for turning and training?
I, I believe that's correct, yes.
Yeah.
But if I understood the question correctly, yeah.
So when we look at the parking count, depending on that one. So I don't think the number is wrong. So you currently there are a hundred and fifty-six spots and you need two hundred and ninety-four. So at this point, you do need a variance for parking. Maybe this goes back to that.
Right. I'll have to look at that.
Yeah.
We'll call that out in advance. Have to look at that. I mean, the question is whether there is an intensity in use as compared to the, uh, the sports center, which is pretty
Totally different.
So, right.
Well, that's intensity, not
It's the ability to change.
It's the intensity of use.
Right, so we'll look at that.
That was mostly just people coming in for games and stuff, not working there.
Most days it'll be long, except for training. Right?
How many employees roughly do you anticipate having here?
I think in, in phase, that, that first phase, so call it from, from October, you know, when we get it active to probably next summer, you're looking at about fifty. And then at maximum, you wouldn't have any more than one hundred, uh, employees that are there. Um, at, at any one time, uh, from a student perspective, which I assume that's the next question. Class size will range from, from, you know, from fifteen students per class, uh, up to probably a maximum of thirty. Um, if we ran two classes simultaneously. So at max, one thirty, if we round it up to one fifty, I think that's the max you'd ever see in the building. Uh, any, you know, any one time at a surge capacity.
I guess one, forty, fifty six.
And that area that you're showing is like reserved parking where you would be doing training? Are you going to allow any parking in that area or that'll just be closed off to parking completely?
So we, we, we could use that for a, a parking area as necessary. Uh, it's, what we would want to do is make sure we can close those gates. So when we're doing training on the vehicles that'll, you know, the, the training vehicles, that we wouldn't want people to inadvertently be able to drive back there and, you know, interact with the students essentially. But it could be used as parking.
Um, please put together some, like a, an auto turn, show us the truck movement on site.
Hmm, yes, we have that. We can provide that.
That'll be, you know, we'll want to see that. Make sure, if you're on the largest size, tractor trailer and any box trucks, wherever you're moving around on site, want to see those movements.
Um, And coming in and out of the main drive apron, I, I, as I recall, at least previously, that was a pretty tight in and out. Any concerns with that?
Where's that, Doug?
The, the main, the main approach apron to the site, is that, are you modifying that to accommodate the large vehicles?
Yeah, this whole area is, is been modified. This is not, this is different than what's existing.
Okay, yeah, the, the existing, the existing, uh, entry, I, I don't even know if we could get a full-size eighteen-wheelers. You could get them in, but it's a, you know, pretty tough turns. So that's why we need to modify the entry.
And will this site and this facility have back and forth interaction with your, your main building across the street? With, with traffic and pe, no, they're completely separate, unrelated?
Well, it's their, they, they could have interaction if, uh, if people needed to go to meetings, you know, be, between buildings. But it, it's actually a, almost like an isolated site. We, the stuff that we're storing for our customer um, can, actually cannot interact with the stuff that's across the street. The, the customer wants it completely separated in terms of storage. Just so there's no, uh, mixing of parts. Um, that's what they've asked us for. So a long answer to, I think the only interaction you're gonna see is if employees have to have meetings across the street where they need to go face to face. Um, which isn't, yeah, it's fairly minimal. Um, if you, if you work in this building, this is where you work.
Got it.
Um, Rob, can you talk about how much land is being disturbed? Um, can you talk about stormwater for a minute and also wetlands?
Yeah, so the, the disturbance will be, um, um, will be replacing the, all the pavement. There'll be the stormwater areas, um, which will be, uh, we're gonna have a bio retention area on the north end. And then a, um, detention pond. Um, right now we're looking at, it's not shown on this concept, but along the south edge of the, the south parking lot. Um, so that'll be disturbed. Um, the wetlands, um, we've submitted for the, um, the JD through the new DEC process. Which from experience on another project is taking like a hundred and ten days to even get a acknowledgement. Um, so Eric has, um, advised us that if we, um, go out and do a, a, kind of a third-party delineation, um, that we could, we could show that. So we, we have that scheduled for next week. Um,
Um, so if you're, I don't know how much land you're disturbing, if it's over an acre and
It's over an acre with the, you know, with the parking lot. It's over an acre with the, you know, with the parking lot. So we're taking the parking lot down, it's great, so that'll be considered disturbance.
Okay, so we'll need a SWIP?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and Eric said you're working on a survey for the whole site, so we can see a plan showing the whole parcel?
Correct.
Thoughts a bit about the fence?
Uh, the fence will be, um, I believe it's eight-foot height. Um, chain link fence. And it'll be fully enclosed, so it connects to the building on each end. Encloses the the loading dock area and then the training area. We'll have um, uh, sliding gates of vehicular access.
So generally, chain link's not going to work. It's not a fence type that we typically allow. Um, so give that some consideration.
What, um, so what what, um, do you have a examples of what is acceptable? Because what what we. You know, what we need is a is a security addition that's, you know. Certain amount of height is to keep, frankly, to keep honest people honest, right?
Right.
So is there a, do you have a listing of what fences would be, um, the town would like to see?
We have one that we approved recently for a national grid project that we can some move the detail on.
Okay.
Are the most recent?
Yeah, it's like an iron that kind of curves out at the top.
Okay, yeah, I think. All right, I'll just write this down, Palisades Gauntlet Fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that can work. I mean, there's some, yes, things like this could wo- could could work. I'll talk to our security lead on it. Um, there is. There, I I recently worked on a facility in a different area that, um, Department of Defense required chain link, uh, but that this isn't one of those areas, so. In past Palisades Gauntlet Fence, okay?
Eric, is that a Maristar? Okay.
Uh.
Yes, it is.
Looks like it.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
Same thing when we talked about, you know, fencing for. Well, a couple of things, dumpster enclosure. Is not, it's not allowed on that side of the building. Got to find another location for it. One that works. But you can't have it on the front of the building right there. Um, and when you do, I don't know whether your intent is to screen them, but. That's the same, you know, we've got kind of dumpster enclosure requirements in the town, so please review those.
Yeah.
Um. You. Talk briefly in terms of mechanical equipment, you know, pad location sizes, are you screening the equipment? You know, I think what we saw in that three D rendering doesn't really match up to the building. So we're trying to understand where where some of your equipment is, how big it is. I mean, these are all things that should be shown on. You know, site lands and elevations um, of the buildings. Um. So. Can you just give us an overview of that one?
Uh, who wants that, Rob?
Um, yeah, I mean, the MEP guys, they're still um, working on those designs. Uh, once they'll shake out, we'll we'll. Uh, update the site plan accordingly, but um. Everything will be, there there's nothing roof mounted, everything will be pad mounted. And um, we'll we'll screen it um, appropriately and then um, you know, get the get the site plans and that rendering's updated.
I mean, if we're looking, I don't know who's driving the the screen, but if we're looking at this as a example. That all that HVAC that's kind of ugly, that's right there, all that's coming out. Um, and we'll go to a ground, it's a term of a ground-mounted roof units that will all be screened. Um, I just can't recall the numbers that are. Our HVAC design, I I want to say there's two or three units, you know, in that general area where you're looking, which would all be screened. Um, and then around, as you wrap around the building toward the back.
What was your intent for screening?
Yeah, I I I think the the screening, I mean, obviously we're showing something here, but uh, we'll work with the town's requirements for dumpster enclosure and for for screening. Um. Well, it's something that that's, uh, you know, fairly attractive. And um, in keeping with the building and we'll try to, you know, we'll size it in such a way that it doesn't look like an afterthought. But, yeah, right, to Ryan's point, there will be some equipment here, and as you go around to the backside of the building, there'll be some as well.
So, as you guys probably know, with pre-engineered metal buildings, they're a giant radiator, and this building is is like others, has really bad icing and sliding snow issues. Are you planning to introduce anything to protect your, you know, your equipment, snow rails? Uh, is there anything else going on the roof?
Yeah, so there'd be no equipment on the roof. And and there may be an incidental small fan or something, but at at this point, there, from this view. There'll be no uh, no equipment on that roof. Uh, we are looking at a couple of alternatives for re-roofing. And providing a greater insulation. Um, and we will introduce uh, snow guards, snow rails. Uh, and we're contemplating gutters, um, but that hasn't, that decision hasn't been uh, worked out yet.
Uh, and also. Re-roofing the building is not part of phase one to phase three of this intended project?
It it it, um, to be determined. I think, um, you know, we're looking at, we're looking at what the best alternatives are right now. And um, I know, um. Court Wilson's on the call here for uh, with CBD Construction. He he may have some, he may want to weigh in on that a little bit as well, but um. No, no final decisions on whether we're re-roofing from the exterior from the top, or uh, if we're just making repairs. Uh, and re-insulating from inside.
Yeah, Nate, we're working through those details now, and I think um. You know, what what SAB's trying to put forth from from a phasing perspective is what the. The least amount that they can actually do to kind of perform for their clients. In an ideal world, if the approval process moves forward, there will obviously be some phasing, but it doesn't mean, you know, if this whole process goes well, you're like, hey, guys, this is good, tie this up. And, you know, you've got to do X, Y, and Z. I could see us combining these phases to do more work, just to take advantage of weather and other things.
Um, yeah, it's, and I don't think it's necessarily the phasing. I think we're trying to capture the entire scope of work.
Correct.
I think, but we're looking at this and we're looking at the elevations and the building, the materials and all the other stuff in there. If the roof is not intended to be replaced, then all of a sudden, one October beautiful day, all of a sudden panels on the roofs start coming off.
No, no, no.
That's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to understand everything right now. So if the roof is not part of the replacement intent right now. You know, don't include it, and if you intend to go change the roof, then come back to us and and show us, but. I don't, I don't want it to just show up randomly.
Yeah.
I don't think you would. I'm not saying that you would, I'm just saying.
There's two options. There's two options that have been, you know, examined. Actually, the the owner of the property, the landlord, is De Stefano, who owns Diamond Roofing, okay? So we're actually working with them right now to. Um, look at two bad, two really good options. One's like a, you know, insulate from below and and, you know, use a, like a liquid coating for the top, which I don't think anybody really is caring for. So I think what's going to, you're ultimately going to see is a a recover. Um, so you would almost see like an EPDM. Roofing measure that we can also install, you know, that not only provides blocking, but we can also install, I mean, I'm sorry, insulation, but can also install blocking. For um, for the snow guards, because we we agree that this has been a problem with ice for years and years and years. The only place that they really have them is on that main canopy there that you can see in blue. Um, so we've got two different options, but I think what we're leaning is honestly like a new covering, so you you'd either see a white or black membrane, like you saw in Jim's. You know, whether it was a coating or a, you know, TPO or EPDM roof. Um, but that's kind of where the the project is leaning right now.
That'll still need engineering for our, compared to the weight of roof. Well, all capabilities. I'm sure it is. So, Court, did I hear that you? Even suggesting a TPO or EPDM roof on this?
Yeah, so there'd be an insulation. Um, covering, right? So they would come in and and um, insulate um, with a, you know, and then use a coverboard. And then use a a TPO or EPDM on top of it.
Oh, that's entirely, I mean, so the the thing that we're going to wrestle with. As a collective group here is that this building is in the high-tech district.
Yep.
It has a higher expectation of finishes and look. Um. You know, how it presents itself as part of the high-tech, think of. Um. It's going across the street.
Uh, the one going up?
No, not not, uh. Not not TTM, yeah, but no, it's like the, it's the.
Yeah, no, I think we're all aware of the buildings across the road.
Right on Colmer Crossing Parkway, the.
Can can you bring up the rendering? Who had the rendering, Jim?
I did.
Yeah, so. So Nate, if you look at this. You know, this is essentially what we're moving towards. You know, if you go out to SAB's buildings, um, off Enterprise Parkway, which is not too far from the Town Hall. Um, they've taken the old, um, they're owned by, um, uh, what's his name? Um, Ruben, uh, is it Rubenstein? Um. I should know this, but anyways, United Radio owns all those facilities. And SAB is actually, their building is the best-looking building over there. They've kind of taken this color scheme and. And taken that old tilt-up building and and made it super attractive and kind of techie, so you could kind of go over there and get kind of a feel for it. The only difference here is they've got a sloped roof. And we kind of wrestle wrestle with, you know, what we we do up there. Um, and we did not, I think where we're heading is these coatings are great, right? But they don't last forever. And when you introduce snow guards and the things we want to do, they have a tendency, you know, to move around and crack, and now you've got roof leaks and a. And a large, large investment. Um, so the thought was to kind of create this. Image here, you know, which is fully recoped, you know, the the only thing is you'd be adding a little bit insulation and elevation, which you probably wouldn't pick up. You know, you'd just be looking up, so, but willing to have conversations about that, if it's if it's a wrestling point or something we have to demonstrate, um, just sharing. Conceptually what we've been beating around over the last couple of weeks as this thing is heated up.
And I'll leave any other comments to the rest of the board, maybe.
Have we talked about sign and talk to building?
Not yet, but in terms of the, in terms of the roofing. Yeah, I think that's that's got to be a. I think a TPO or a PDM, even if it is a white, it's probably going to be a heavy lift in terms of. Appearance, especially on a sloped roof like this, right up next to four eighty-one. You know, it is visible, it is a fairly. You know, high-profile location. I don't know that that's. That fits with. High-tech. I think if it was a, if it was a flat roof with a parapet and you're not seeing it, that's one thing. Um, but.
Yeah, I I think, I think. A black, you know, a black rubber roof up there, I think is is really out, you know, just the the color and the mass, I think is out of place for a building of this. Of this magnitude, because the roof is, you know, it's a, it's a huge presence. Uh, and you can see it. However, you know, maybe, maybe it's a, like an an off-white, a gray color, uh, that has the. Uh, you know, the, call it the fake ribs on it to kind of give it that that same aesthetic as the rest of the building. That's something that could be considered.
Yeah, I I I don't believe anything, anyone's considering, you know, uh. Seventy thousand square feet of black roof, so.
No, right now, I don't know if you can see the screen. I think it's Jim who's talking, but it's it's depicted in in white.
It could be a white or or light gray, if anything. So, yeah, I mean, again, we're working with the existing building. We're not making any substantial changes to it, so. Um, we we appreciate your comments on that. We'll do what we can to make this building look kind of new and clean.
You've got your work cut out for you.
Yeah.
So, question was just raised about signage. Are you proposing signage for this site?
No.
Can they at least need a number? It's usually at least a street address number.
Yeah, there'll 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 be a street address as required, but there'll be no signage.
Monument sign or anything?
No.
Nope.
Um, so now you're planning to do this project in phases. From this board's perspective and the town's perspective, you know, we're going to want to approve a plan for the whole thing. You can call out your phases on the plan. Um, but we're not going to want to see like this coming to the board piecemeal. Uh, so we're going to kind of want to see the whole master plan that wants to be approved by the planning board.
Are you proposing any EV charging stations?
No, that's, we 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 haven't. That hasn't been part of the discussion.
Okay. Ryan, you have those at Enterprise?
Yeah, we, uh, I think we've got six at Enterprise and we've probably got eight or ten at the Colmer facility.
And I think they're, I think they're considering something for um, the film hub too.
Yeah, there's ten at the Film Hub and ten at and uh, Colmer, potentially ten being at the Film Hub.
What other questions? It's like time is of the essence, so. Time is of the essence. I think Alana made a point, you know. The town, this board wants to see it as a singular project. We understand the phasing and. Want to work to to get you guys in there as quick as possible, so it's, in order for this to happen, it's got to take. Both our groups to to push forward on this. We've got to look, you know, parking is one, we've got to look at that, because that may may require a variance. Um, which may slow down the process a little bit. Oops, sorry. Um, so we've got to look at that, see what we can do there. You've heard the comments today, you know, I think Eric will probably capture the comments and get you updated. Feedback. Right, so that we can, we can put forward. And then what I think I'd like to do, just to to get you guys. On a track here is. I think you, hopefully you've been provided with the deliverable deadlines for each of the the meetings. Making sure that we we're hitting those deadlines, so we can keep our process moving and keep you guys moving through this, so. It is, it is going to be fast, but. You guys have to have to hit those deadlines. We're going to be able to accommodate this. Please, Doc. Yes.
So I'll send you all those dates after today's meeting. And try to summarize the okayed comments. They're they're pretty similar to what I provided. On May twenty-eighth, but I'll, I'll update it and send it back out.
I have a couple of follow-up questions on the site discussions. Um, for the dumpsters. It it, is a variance possible to to have them on the south side, or is it just prohibited that they can't be in the front? Front yard?
A variance is possible, and they would prefer not to put it in the front.
Right.
Uh, it is something that's variable.
Okay, I just wanted to know if it was an option or if this is totally off the table, so we'll we'll discuss that and see if we can make it work. Um, my other question was about the parking counts. Right now, we're we're showing that kind of big open space, the blue space as industrial. If some portions of that could be considered warehousing, you know, where the the loading is coming in and out. Um, that might give us some flexibility to to get that requirement down. So I don't know what thoughts were on that, or if you want. Yeah, I think Rob, Rob and I will work on kind of an analysis of 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 who's here and and what the requirement. Who's here and, and what the requirements might be, I mean, for example, this training area. Um, it's a rather large area with some stationary trucks in there. Uh, the people that'll be in the classrooms are the same people that'll be out here looking at this, so it won't be a group out here working on the. On these, on the trucks and in the classroom, so it's the same people. Occupying that entire area, so I think we, we can take a, a closer look at the actual real requirements, I think Ryan was right, there might be. You know, a hundred and thirty people here max at any given time, so, but we can put some kind of analysis together on that.
Yeah, and our parking is based on square footage, not the number of people, except for, unless it's warehousing, then it's based on employees.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look at all of the, the parking stuff, we'll help see kinda what options might exist. Um, between Jamie, Alana and myself, we'll figure out.
Mm-hmm.
What we can do, I mean. We wanna work through this with you guys, so we're gonna, we're gonna help how we can, you know, you just gotta reciprocate, I guess.
One, one question I, I would like to pursue, just if I could. Um, and I'll, I'll, and I'll say, I don't understand a lot of the, um, a lot of the process here, um. It, would it be possible, if, it's because a lot of the demolition work is inside the envelope of the building already? And we're, and we're not gonna affect anything on the outside, is it possible to start doing some of the demolition on the inside? Cause we're probably looking at four to six weeks of work there, where we can, we could get ahead of the process. Um, understanding that we're moving at risk to a degree, um, but would that be a possibility?
Uh, we can talk about that here, if you did get a demo permit, that would be at your own risk without having an approved site plan. At this point, um, we can talk about it here, I don't think we would move past the demo permit without a site plan. Um, but we'll get back to you about that.
Okay, man, I acknowledge that, I just, I know if you walked, if I was to take you in that building, you, you would say, wow, there's a lot of stuff that's gotta come out. Before we can get to what we're showing you, so I appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, Ryan, I, I let, as I, per my email, I kinda mentioned that to Derek yesterday, and we both kind of agreed, we'd have that follow-up conversation after this call. So I'm glad you're asking as well, cause it's technically, you know, with or without a use change, it's, you know, demo should be permitted. You know, for, for anything, so glad you guys would consider that.
I just, I guess, I, I, I don't, unless the, the team, Jim, Cor, if you guys, or Rob, if there's no more questions. I think, I, I guess I feel like we just need to repackage this a little bit tighter, um. And acknowledge that we've been moving really fast as it is, and if there, maybe I'll, what I highlight, uh, highlight is. Um, and we're talking about roofing or fencing or other things, um, if. A- as we're going through this, if we're uh offering, and if we're offering something that's not feasible. If you could give us an example, what is, um, cause I, I think we're, we're, I, I'm actually fairly open, or actually very open to. Tell me what the right answer is, or right answers, and we'll come back with, you know, the one, you know, the one that we like. Um, that's on your list of approved, uh, approved approaches, um, so. I guess the, the term earlier user was reciprocation, uh, absolutely, like whatever, whatever you need us to do. Like just, just tell us what, you know, wh- where to look and what the answer you're looking for is, and we'll do our very best to accommodate it.
Yeah, I mean, to, for what it's worth, I mean, the, the building itself, the materials on the building, I think that's gonna fall squarely on you guys. To, to make recommendations, um, take a look at the high-tech district, take a look at some of the other projects that we've approved recently. And the high-tech, you know, what the intent is. Um, but things like the fencing, we'll get to the, the fencing, you know, take a look at our. Dumpster enclosure code, I mean, they're, they're pretty clear and straightforward, we're not. Sounds like we are, we're not that picky.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think you are, it's just like when you're, when you're, I got, I've just, I guess my brain is, I'm working on. In my mind, I'm working on a project in a completely different state, or I was, and, you know, there, there's expectations there versus here, and just.
Of course.
Just point us in the right direction and we'll, we'll, we'll work with you.
Yeah, I mean. See if you can take a first step, get some of that stuff updated, we'll give you good feedback, we'll make it clear and concise and straightforward and. We'll provide any recommendations if we have them.
Okay, Jim, Court, anything?
No, it's all, it's all good, thanks, thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you, su- super helpful, thank you all, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with. No other work sessions this morning, I'm gonna close the work session.